Good morning. This time we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, July 14. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. All are present, we do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those who are in attendance today would ask that if you have noise-making device to turn it to silent mode or off, so as not to interfere with our electronic communications. This morning, we do not have any presentations to make, so our first item will be our public comment portion of our agenda. If there's an item that you would like to address to the commission which does not later appear on the agenda, limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that information. State your name and address.
Terry Clark, Shawnee, Kansas. I see that we have a budget now that's going to go over a billion, 100 million. It's a pretty good number. I'm here on something I think's the most important issue we have facing the county. I've been looking into the school security, and it's a joke. We don't have any school security. But we have fantastic security on some of the buildings here, such as courthouse. The courthouse in Topeka with the Supreme Court Justice, where he's ordered hundreds of millions for the schools, not a word about security. The federal building downtown Kansas City, Kansas, same thing, tremendous security. I've talked to security officials in four districts, two haven't called me back. Three of the districts agree with me that it's a joke, but they can't come out and publicly say anything. We just built a new high school at Olathe West, literally no security, yet we're building a new courthouse, over 100 and some million dollars, and it's loaded with security. I've talked to the sheriff about it. I got the numbers for the courthouse, which you've got an elementary school about five blocks from here with no security. You've got 25 deputies over here. If you try to get in that building, you've got deputies walking around the outside, the inside, at the front and back door. I defy anybody to try to get in there with a gun. It's not going to happen, you'll probably be dead. But you can get in any of the schools that you want to get into and probably do a lot of damage. Gardner Edgerton has 11 schools, three resource officers. That's less than one resource officer, almost four. Spring Hill's worse, they have five and one resource officer. This is a joke. This is one of the wealthiest counties in America, and it's time, and you're going to say, "Well, that's a school board." No, it isn't, it's all ours. We all have kids going there. And you're probably saying, "Why does this old fogey care?" Well, I'm not going to be going back to school, but my five-year-old grandson is. And he's my most prized possession, and he went preschool to the Jewish Community Center, and we all know what happened there. It's time for somebody to get their head out of the sand and start to look at these schools and say, "We need some security." Metal detectors, guards, whatever, it's got to get done. We're spending over $2 billion a year between the county and the school districts, and the security is a joke. I hate to see an incident happen, but I don't know why you all, and you're all elected officials, you all have kids in your districts, and you all have schools in your districts, and you can certainly start. We've got buses running around in this county that are three quarters empty. You've put decals up on the windows so people don't see how empty the buses are, millions of dollars. We've got two airports out here. One of them is just a toy. Johnson County Executive could be sold and developed and take that cash. We have plenty of cash. Money's not the issue. And when you have a $1 billion, $100 million budget coming up, to say that we can't afford security for the schools is a joke. And it's time that something got done. And I'm not going to go away, because I worry about him going to school here in about six, eight, 10, 12 weeks, 10 weeks. Something needs to be done.
Good. Thank you. Someone else? All right. If there's no one else to be heard, then our public comment portion of our agenda is concluded. There are no notes for the record this morning, so we do have one item that needs to be added to the agenda, and I'm going to ask the clerk to make a note of that item. It involves a pass-through funding from the state in order to address a contaminated soil issue on the courthouse property itself. But the county needs to engage in that contract with the state, and so that needs to be taken care of. There is a motion unless there are questions. All right, Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Chairman. I would move to approve adding an item to the board's agenda for June 14, 2018, to consider an exception to competition and authorize a contract with AT abatement for contaminated soil removal and backfill at the new Johnson County Courthouse project site for a total amount not to exceed $147,074.
Second. And again, the motion is to add it to the agenda, which will be the last item on our agenda. Any further questions?
Okay. This is just a procedural.
Right. This is procedural at this time. No questions. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Okay, motion carried. It will be added to the agenda as the last item. Moving to the consent agenda, would the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda items?
Item number one, consider approving May 24, 2018 business session minute. Item number two, consider authorizing acceptance of the alive and well communities grant from the Healthcare Foundation of Greater Kansas City and approve the reclassification of mental health reserves in the amount of $150,000 to support trauma-informed care services in Johnson County. Item number three, consider approving a memorandum of understanding with the City of Olathe to participate in the Johnson County Community Development Block Grant Program for federal fiscal years 2019 to 2021, and authorize the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners to execute such memorandum. Item number four, consider approving the creation of a project account in the amount of $750,000 for infrastructure improvements at New Century Air Center to be funded by a transfer from the county's general fund reserve to the Airport Capital Projects Fund related to the sale of the fire station located at New Century. And item number five, consider authorizing the Johnson County Developmental Support to add one FTE to provide additional staff for the grant project known as End Dependence Kansas, and to authorize the reclassification of JCDS reserves in the amount of $33,597 for FY 2018.
All of these items have been reviewed by the commission during last week's agenda review. Is there any item a commissioner would like to have considered separately? Is there anyone present who would like to have an item considered separately? All right, no one to be heard, it's back before the commission. Mr. Osterhaus.
Do we approve the consent agenda as read?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to the action agenda, next item, number six.
Resolution number 040-18, consider City of Gardner application numbers PDP-18-03 and FDP-18-01. A request for preliminary and final development plan for construction of Gardner Law Enforcement Justice Center at the southwest corner of University Drive and Moonlight Road, Gardner, Kansas.
Mr. Leipzig.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jay Leipzig, Planning Development and Codes Director. This item was brought forward from the City of Gardner for the Gardner Law Enforcement Center. It was approved by the City of Gardner on May 21, 2018. It was also unanimously approved by the Airport Commission, and on May 23, it's brought to you today because it is within one mile of the New Century Airport. And I have a couple of, in addition to the location, I have a site plan and also an elevation of what the building looks like, or not the best, but you can at least get an idea of what it will look like. It's approximately a 33,000-square-foot building.
The action of zoning has already been completed and before us, and this is the preliminary and final development plan, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so it's the last step in that process.
Yes, that's correct.
Any questions? Okay, is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Michelle Cricks, I'm a planner at the City of Gardner.
Yeah, if you want, come to the microphone, please.
My name is Michelle Cricks. I'm a planner at the City of Gardner, just here representing the project for on behalf of the city, and I'm available for questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no questions. Anyone else? All right, if not, do I hear a motion? Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. I move to adopt resolution number 040-18 approving the City of Gardner application numbers PDP-18-03 and FDP-18-01 for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth in the resolution.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the recommendation in regards to the preliminary and final development plan for the project as noted. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number seven.
Resolution number 039-18, consider City of Olathe application number SU-16-02, renewal of a special use permit for an existing quarry and construction and demolition landfill, CND, operation on about 240 acres at 23775 West 159th Street, Olathe, Kansas.
Jay. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jay Leipzig. This item's within the City of Olathe. It is within one mile of the New Century Airport. It's for renewal of a conditional use permit for an existing quarry and demolition landfill on about 240 acres at West 159th Street. This item was approved by the City of Olathe on April 17, 2018, also approved by the Airport Commission on May 23, 2018. The original approval of this item was 10 years ago, in 2008.
Okay, questions? Thank you, Jay. Anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? Yes.
Good morning, members of the commission. My name is David Waters with the Latho Gage Law Firm, here on behalf of the applicant at APAC. Dan Jones with APAC is present with me as well. I certainly appreciate the Airport Commission's recommendation, appreciate staff's recommendation. As you know, this is a little bit different than some other special use permits that might come before you, because this is limited more to the airport operations side of things. But I did just want to let you guys know that we are agreeable with the stipulations that have been recommended by your staff and by the Airport Commission, and if you do have any questions, we're here to answer them to the extent we can.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Randy Kreisel. I live at 24120 West 167th Street, which is south of this quarry operation. I've lived there since 1975. Quarrying started in the early 1990s, the northern box, early 1990s. Lower box is zoned agricultural. That began in the mid-1990s. The upper part is zoned M3 at the current time. City of Olathe requirements for quarries allow them on M3 or agricultural with a special use permit. For CND landfill, city ordinance only requires, only allows them on M3 with a special use permit, not on agricultural. So up until now, there's been a separate special use permit for the quarry and the CND landfill, and the only landfilling has been on the northern part. We were told back in 2001, when they first started landfilling, the agricultural would be a buffer between us and the landfill. They got a landfill permit on the whole thing, but the agricultural was just to be their access road. This time, the city is now, for this CND landfill, treated it different than any other one in the city, which carries a separate special use permit. They've called it an accessory use to the quarry temporarily, because quarrying will be done long before the landfill, and they say now they can landfill on agricultural closer to us. Why is that a problem? This is not an inert landfill. They have organic material, they have plastics, they have wood, they have paper. The applicant themselves wrote a letter to the city last year and told them if water ever gets to the landfill material, it can generate methane gas, which is flammable, and hydrogen sulfide gas, the rotten egg order, which has other health issues. Why should we now have to give up our buffer just because they want to landfill this property and bring those risks closer to us? It doesn't make any sense. That's my issue with the landfill. Now, I have an issue with the quarry, and that's vibration. Back in the 1990s, the city ordinances limited the vibrations for quarries and for industrial property at residential property lines to be .02 inches per second. That's still in their UDO today, okay? Last year, the city staff decided that the section on quarries that limits the residential limit .02 is not enforceable, because it doesn't have some words in there on how it's measured. They determined that the section on industrial property for industrial districts that limits residential vibrations .02 is enforceable. So for this special use application, they put a stipulation in applying only to the ag portion that is closest to us, allowing them to vibrate residential property lines at .3 inches per second. That is 15 times greater than the UDO limits for vibrating residential properties in Olathe. They did it down here, there are no residential properties in Olathe near this, only us outside the city limits. It's like we're second-class citizens. If you really want to vote to approve it in this state, I would ask one thing. Delay your approval, set up a test blast, you're all welcome to my house anytime, and feel what it feels like. If they can set up a test that approaches .3 inches per second at residential property, see what it's like. I have literally been in my house, felt a jolt, thought a big tree limit hit my house, I'm rushing out the front door to see what happened, as I'm out my door, my next-door neighbor, Joanne Fruits, is rushing out her door to see what happened at her house. This is an actual occurrence we had. So I'm just asking you, these numbers I throw out .02, .3, they don't mean much to you. I'm not talking about property damage or structure damage, those are much higher limits. People are more sensitive to vibrations than structures are. If you've ever been driving in your car and suddenly you see some vibrations coming through, what is that? And finally, you figure out, somebody passing by with a low-frequency woofer or something in their trunk is shaking your car. You can't block it by closing your windows and doors. It comes through the ground up into our house. We can't block it out. They have a right to quarry, but they shouldn't intrude on our right for the peaceful enjoyment of our residents. I retired in 2015, I'm there every day. My wife is retired, she's there every day. That's what I'm requesting of you. Go slow on this, make sure you agree that the stipulation on vibrations that only applies down on the ag portion of the property is appropriate for us county residents. Thank you.
Let me ask you, did you raise these issues at the, before the City of Olathe?
I raised these issues. These issues were raised at the city council, and there were, I sent two emails to Mr. Brown, okay? There were more than 50 violations of the commercial property vibrations in 2017, okay? So they really, I guess it's hard for them to keep doing what they're doing and move further south unless they get this relief on the vibrating of us residents. The city confirmed that there were violations on that. We brought it up at the city council meeting. City council didn't ask their planner any questions about the vibrations. Asked Mr. Waters, Mr. Waters says, "Oh, I don't think we violated anything." And that was the only questioning on vibrations after we brought it up and we had submitted paperwork, the city had verified the violations. So yes, they were brought up, but we were treated like we could talk, but we weren't listened to. They didn't respond to any of our concerns. We only had like four basic concerns. The vibrations were one, the landfill was one, the setbacks, they've reduced the setbacks from the normal 1,000 feet in the city for us to down to, from residential property for quarries, down to 750. And there was an aesthetic issue with a big, huge, ugly berm on the south side. But vibration is my main concern today, and the allowance of the landfill to come next door to us residential neighbors.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Robert Dennis, and my residence is the closest one to this raw quarry. I could repeat everything that Randy just said, but I'd waste your time and my time. But my one question is, how would you people vote if this was in your backyard? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Someone else? Jay, perhaps, or Mr. Jarrett can respond to some of this. The item is before this body. The activity and the decision that was made is in the City of Olathe. And the only reason it's before this body is because it's within one mile of the airport. So our decision is focused on any impact on the airport, am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So...
Just because it's within one mile of the airport, we look at flight lines, flight considerations, but the conditions for noise, vibrations, that is all part of the City of Olathe approval process for the conditional use permit.
Okay, so, other than for airport, I'll use the term broadly, security factors, that's where our decision must be focused.
Yes, that is correct. I'm looking at Mr. Jarrett, too. Yes.
All right. Okay, anything you'd like to add, Mr. Jarrett?
No, it's basically a matter of we're looking at compatibility, the land use compatibility, is the quarry and landfill feel basically compatible with the abutting use that we have as an airport? That's the issues that we're looking at.
Okay. Now, if the zoning item itself had come to this body, then we would have the ability to address the concerns that have been raised.
Correct. If the CUP were in front of you, you would be able to look at the conditions of the CUP and where on the property the various activities could occur, but those are City of Olathe decisions. Our decision is, given what they've decided, is that compatible as a land use matter with the use we're making of the airport?
Okay, all right. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Jarrett, the only question I have is, the residents that are affected or do not live in the City of Olathe, they live in unincorporated Johnson County, which we would represent, and would that change any of the dynamics of this?
Well, it changes the dynamics in the sense that when it was in front of the city, we can certainly make comment. We, for example, on many of our things, send it to the city, ask them what their impressions are and whatnot. I don't know whether we had an opportunity to comment on these issues prior to the city taking action, but once the city takes action and it comes to us, it's really just on that land use compatibility question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, if not, it's back before the commission. I'm sorry, was there another question?
May I have another minute of time?
Sure.
Please. I didn't understand that your review was only limited to the airport. I planned to attend the airport board session on this. Not that you would address vibrations there, but you might address putting a, obviously in a flight plan, there's always a chance of an airplane coming down, doing something. If it were to breach the cap of a landfill near us, would that cause a gas release that infect the residents nearby and things like that? Might be appropriate to discuss there. There was no posting of the airport session prior to the meeting, okay? I didn't get a notice, I don't know if notices were sent out, but I kept monitoring the agendas for the meetings, and I found out that the airport meeting had been held when I saw it come up on the agenda for this week here, and I went back to the airport board's website, and there's still no agenda posted for that meeting date at that time. I called the airport commission, oh, we must have forgot to post it. We only sent out notices to people that let us know in advance they're interested in what we're doing. Well, how am I, as a citizen, supposed to know that? So right now, in the documents for this, in front of you, it says there was an airport hearing posted, public notice given, hearing was held, and they approved it. I'm telling you, there was no public notice given, they didn't even put their agenda out in advance of the meeting, and maybe what I had to say wouldn't have had anything to do with it, but that's not transparent government. That's what I wanted to add.
Well, we'll certainly check that, but to my recollection, all of our advisory boards or commission meeting dates are posted, but we'll double-check. I would be surprised if they were not posted, totally surprised. Any other questions? All right, the items are back before us. Is there a motion? Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. Before I make the motion, I just want to make a quick statement. As the commission representing the district where this is occurring, I understand the concern of the Kreisels and the folks that live there. I have heard them. As I had said last week in agenda review, this is not an item for us. It's not in our purview to decide if it's too much vibration, or too loud, or too close. It's simply proximity to the airport operations. That's, as I understood it, and I've heard our legal counsel, Mr. Jarrett, explain it, that is the decision before us. So it seems to me that there may be remedy elsewhere, there may be other avenues that could be pursued to have a further discussion. I would ask that, you know, from APAC's perspective, APAC, from a conversational standpoint with the owners of the properties around there, explaining what you're doing, how this works. I don't know if there's a misunderstanding about what's going on there, or if there's a, I don't know what's happening there, but some communication might go a long way to straightening that out. In the meantime, the motion and the issue before us has to do with compatibility to an airport. So to that end, I'm ready to make a motion that reads, "I move to adopt resolution number 039-18 approving City of Olathe application number SU-16-02 for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth in the resolution."
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the application in regards to the quarry that's been recommended by the City of Olathe. Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I concur with Mr. Brown's summary of the issue before us, which is also the summary that you offered, and will support this, but I would like to ask that we direct staff to investigate or double-check the posting issues that have been raised and report back to us as soon as possible. And I would extend that, just to double-check on all of our boards and commissions, to make sure we have a process in place that someone beyond a local individual has authority and reviews that systematically for us, because that is important.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, I would just offer this lastly. Mr. Leipzig, if there are complaints, continued complaints in regards to this operation from the unincorporated parts of the county residents, then we need to communicate with the City of Olathe and move on those.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other comments? All right, the motion is before us. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number eight, consider authorizing the publication of a proposed budget for Johnson County Government in the amount of $1,102,521,264 for the fiscal year 2019, and setting a public hearing on the proposed budget for Monday, July 30, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the board chambers.
Mr. Newfeld.
Good morning. Scott Newfeld, the Budget Office. This is a step in the process wherein the board gives us formal direction to publish a maximum budget, which is not just a maximum... a maximum budget, um, which is not just a maximum total budget by a taxing district, it's a maximum budget by fund. And what that means is that, um, we can't increase that total expenditure budget by any fund after this point. As we discussed last week, uh, this also is set where the estimated mill levy is constant for all three taxing districts. The plan, based on, uh, the direction we've received from the board, is to bring forth a rollback budget of approximately .25 mils for the county taxing district, plus the estimated changes in valuation due to pending appeals and exemptions, um, for our public hearing at the end of July, and to similarly, um, bring forth numbers that involve a partial rollback on the .75 mils for both the park, uh, district and the library related to their capital plans. Um, and, and so those are the numbers that we are going to incorporate into the public hearing. And then barring changes in the state budget, uh, which is why we're starting with a constant mill levy, or changes in direction from you, uh, that's where we'll be, uh, presenting the final budget for adoption in August. So at this point, uh, we are staying conservative with the constant mill levy, uh, waiting for the state to, to finish up their work. And then assuming everything goes well, uh, we will proceed with the board direction on those, uh, various rollback scenarios for the three taxing districts. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Uh, Mr. Newfeld, uh, just, just a couple of questions and, uh, uh, obviously, uh, there'll be a lot more comment at the, at the public hearing. Uh, I just want to emphasize that, uh, our, uh, discussion so far has been to reduce the general fund mill levy and consider small reductions in parks and libraries. This action will allow us to make that decision based upon, uh, some final numbers on assessed value, et cetera, and the comments at the, at the public hearing. In, in regards to some of the, uh, budget highlights, I would, uh, simply note that our budget carries a wide, wide range of activities. Many of those activities are required by state statute. Uh, in many instances, we act as, uh, representatives or agents, uh, of the state of Kansas. And, uh, there's about, uh, I don't know, 10 or 12 activities that we are required to fund, uh, which the state requires us to do so, and, uh, the state does not cover the full cost. It's always interesting to me, and I tried to speak to the fact that, uh, you know, the budget breakdown, uh, the county's general fund budget is something, is approximately 385 million. That's, uh, all the general fund activities that we have to, uh, take care of. Uh, there are separate, uh, items for parks and the libraries. We have some enterprise, uh, operations, the parks, as well as the airports. Uh, Johnson County wastewater is a big, big part of our budget, somewhere around 175 million. And, uh, so if you add the general fund operation of 380 plus 175 million, you've got over, uh, uh, 500 million of expenses that absolutely must be provided for. So, uh, I would encourage those who, uh, who look at our budget, uh, the, the, the general detail is certainly available for review. Uh, I would also note that, uh, I think our general fund is supported by 200, excuse me, 200 million of property taxes. That's countywide. Uh, so, uh, uh, parks and libraries each receive about 30 million apiece, uh, property taxes towards somewhere around 260, 270 million in property taxes for the budget. We also carry, uh, I think the current budget has about 242 million, uh, for reserves. Most of that reserve is set aside in Johnson County wastewater, uh, as we're rebuilding that wastewater plant. Uh, our expenses to Kansas City of Missouri will go up, will basically double, uh, because they will be treating all the flow during the construction period. So we've been building that reserve to, uh, uh, help offset that increased cost. And, uh, Johnson County wastewater is a utility. They do not receive any property taxes. Only the, uh, the patrons of the wastewater district pay those fees. So, uh, other questions?
Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Newfeld, I'll direct this to you, but if you would like to pass it on to someone else, I, I would understand. Um, in years past, we've had, uh, the obligatory budget hearing and, uh, other than staff showing up, attendance has been rather, um, rather low. And I was just wondering if there was a communication plan, uh, that's in the works to help encourage, uh, at least the announcement and the invitation to that meeting. And I suspect that's maybe not your forte, but I, I, you're at the podium.
Yeah, I would be happy to have Sharon come up, or her staff.
Is she still here?
Come up? Yeah, the, uh, the, you know, obviously, it's a, it's a public meeting and we do the normal, uh, notifications, but, um, I'll let Sharon talk about what all they're doing.
Absolutely. We do, uh, promote the budget hearing through, uh, media advisory, uh, news release and a reminder to the media. Uh, we also do, uh, put that information out on social media to let the public know and then put it on our website, homepage of our website. So, um, we do everything we can to let the public know that that hap, that meeting is happening.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Kluck?
Mr. Chairman, um, first of all, um, I support, uh, I will be supporting the, uh, mill levy reduction for general government, um, when this comes up, uh, down the line here. But I will also ask, uh, I will be asking, um, the, the commission to reconsider the, the lowering of the, of the mill levy for the parks and, and libraries. Uh, as I stated in the past, I'm, I'm concerned about some of the obligations and additional commitments that these, these folks are having as they, um, that they're trying to put the legacy plans and their master plans into order. But, uh, apart from that, um, I do want to recognize the staff, Scott, Penny, Joe, and, and Maureen, the rest of, of the team. It's been a, a tough year running through the budget and I, I think you, you all have done a yeoman's job there, uh, getting this together and getting the message out and while maintaining a fairly conservative approach to the budget. And I'm, I'm real pleased with the, the work you've all done. And with that, Mr. Chairman, when you're ready, I'd be happy to make motion.
Well, I'll wait on that for a minute. Uh, is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? All right, there's no one to be heard. It's back before the commission. Uh, and again, I would want to emphasize this. This sets, this sets a maximum budget. Uh, the final adoption and the final numbers will be determined by the Board of County Commissioners following the public hearing that will be held. So, Mr. Kluck?
Thank you. I move the board to authorize the publication of a proposed budget for the Johnson County Government in the amount of $1,102,521,264 for fiscal year 2019, based upon the determinations made by the board in its work sessions and that the board set up the public hearing on the proposed budget for Monday, July 30th at 7:00 PM in the board chambers.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the motion and the budget for publication purposes and consideration of the public hearing. Any further comments or questions?
All right, there being none, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kluck?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Next item is the added item.
Yes. Consider an exception to competition and authorize a contract with AT abatement for contaminated soil removal and backfill at the new Johnson County Courthouse project site for a total amount not to exceed $147,074. The cost for this work will be reimbursed by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment.
Okay. Good, good morning, Chairman Ilert. I'm Brad Reinhardt with Facilities. Uh, first, thank you for allowing this, uh, agenda item to be added to this morning's agenda for your consideration and action. The scope of this request is for the excavation, transport, and proper disposal of approximately 1,730 cubic yards of contaminated soil located on the southwest corner of the new courthouse site. Uh, this soil contamination was discovered through the course of property transfer from the City of Olathe to the county, and it appears that a filling station operated on this location from approximately 1924 to the late 60s. So this is an exception to competition request because we did not utilize the county's normal solicitation process. Rather, we had J.E. Dunn obtain three bids for this work on behalf of the county and through their normal, um, through their network of trade partners and their normal solicitation processes. This work will be reimbursed by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and to be eligible for reimbursement, it must be contracted by the county. So that's why we can't add this on to J.E. Dunn's scope of work for the courthouse project. So receiving your approval today will allow this work to start and finish quickly, thereby preventing scheduled delays for J.E. Dunn's start of the actual courthouse project, which is anticipated in early July. AT abatement was the lowest of the three bids received for this work at $147,074. And the, uh, funding initially for this work will come from countywide funds prior to reimbursement by KDHE. Uh, and the opinion of the cost for this project was estimated at around $200,000 when we first discovered the issue. And with that, I would stand for any questions you have.
Uh, Mr. Reinhardt, let me ask you this. In regards to the, uh, the low bidder, uh, I'm assuming Dunn has reviewed their activities and their qualifications as well as staff?
Yes, they use their normal, uh, process that they, they do when they're bidding, uh, scopes of, of work for various projects, and certainly they follow that process. Here, you've done work with AT abatement.
Operator also?
I'm, I'm sorry.
You're comfortable with this operator?
Yes, we have experience with AT abatement. They've done work for the county as well.
Okay, all right. Mr. Ashcraft?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Reinhardt, I noticed that you want us to consider an exemption of competition or to competition, and I respect that and the desire to keep the project moving. But I, I look at the, the state's, uh, expectations, and is this a typographical error that says a minimum of three bids for all purchases made in excess of $500? I, I'm, how does that, how does that work when we're trying to expedite and they put a requirement like that? Is, is that, is that correct? Uh, and maybe it's inconsequential, but, I mean, it's in their letter and it just, it just, Mr. Brown is snickering at me. I'm, forgive my naivete, but...
Seems like there'll be a lot of $500-plus expenses at this...
Well, how do you, yeah, and three bid, I mean...
I would suggest, based upon media reports, that the state evidently doesn't follow that also in their bidding process. I just make that comment, so maybe, maybe that needs to be revised. I'm not sure.
Well, hopefully that will not delay the work that needs to be done. I mean, that's, that's almost bizarre.
That requirement may have been put in place in 1924 when the original service station was built, something like that.
Uh, I acquiesce to your sense of humor, Mr. Chairman.
We'd met the requirement, though, because we have the three bids.
Okay, that's fine.
Right. Any other, any other questions or comments? Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? All right, there's no one to be heard. Do I hear a motion? Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Chairman. I move to authorize an exception to competition and a contract to AT abatement for contaminated soil removal and backfill at the new Johnson County Courthouse project site for a total amount not to exceed $147,074.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the exception and, uh, award the contract as noted. Uh, any further questions or discussion?
Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kluck?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Are there any other items?
No, sir.
All right, moving to reports and communications, Ms. Post Oak Ferguson.
Chairman and commissioners, you have four items before you today in the manager's memo. The first one is informational. City Council of Olathe will conduct a public hearing on Monday, July 23rd, 7:00 PM to consider the petition for vacation of existing public alleys within the Platte area for the courthouse, and information is attached. The second item is with mixed feelings that we talk about, and I want to give a special thank you to Sharon Watson and her years of service. She's served Johnson County for three and a half years, and she's moving on from us to the American Red Cross and doing some, looking forward to doing some great work there. Her last day is tomorrow, so you saw her up at the podium. You'll see her one more time, because I'm going to ask her to say a few words here in a few minutes. Sharon really took the communications to another level while she was here. She, we see increased, um, social media presence, her, her part, her part in the public safety sales tax was really beneficial to the team, um, and her, as well as her team. Increased, um, social media, as I mentioned, and then she can, her staff continues to be award-winning. So she is definitely leaving this place better than she found it, and she's leaving a great staff team for us to continue her work. And we wish you well, Sharon, and good luck. And I think she wants to say a few words, so if you please come forward. Thank you, Sharon, for your service.
Well, commissioners, chairman, I just want to say thank you. It has been truly an honor to work with each and every one of you. I've learned so much from you, uh, and it, and it's just been a, a pleasure to ha, to have that experience. I've learned so much from Johnson County employees and staff, and I was just thinking yesterday how, uh, they're, the team of people in this county and in this organization is so professional and some of the kindest people who are so helpful in trying to get you what you need when you start out as a new employee. And when I started here, I had, I'd been in state government for 15 years, hadn't been in county government at all, so it, I had a, a learning curve there, and it was a tremendous experience to come in and be welcomed by all of you and be welcomed by the staff. And so it has been a tremendously wonderful experience being here, and I'm just glad that I've had this opportunity and had the opportunity to come across the paths of all of you. So thank you for the opportunity.
Sharon.
Let me, let me underscore what, uh, county manager said, and that was, you really developed an outstanding process, and your personal commitment to, uh, uh, providing information to all of us and to the community about county activities, uh, is, is just outstanding. And, uh, uh, thank you very much, even though I did edit ever now and then. You did an amazing job in, uh, representing activities of the commission. Uh, so we wish you well, uh, in the eastern part of, uh, Missouri, and, uh, no doubt, uh, the Red Cross is getting an amazing talent, and, uh, so good luck in all your endeavors.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Oh, I did fail to mention, so we have as an interim to take over for Sharon, and she overlapped this week. You may, you see a familiar face in the room, Jody Hanson, interim PIO director. And it's obviously effective after Sharon leaves tomorrow.
Welcome, welcome back to the agenda.
You recognize Jody. She's been part of our team before and P, in our county manager's office for PIO. So we welcome her back, appreciate Chad Von Anan and J.C.D.S. allowing us to, um, take her and, and use her in the interim period. So, um, I, I believe the position is posted, Joe, out there. So, um, thank you, Jody, and welcome back, Jody. Next item is a good news item. I-35 and 75th Street, I, this happened so fast, I didn't even give, a chance to give Jim Allen a heads up on this for the Jim Allen plan, but...
I know that.
So, um, he, yeah, I figured he did. So I-35 and 75th Street, as you know, has been on your radar as, um, having, directing staff to have a lot of follow-up communication and many of you yourselves with KDOT. Uh, so recently, they're, as we've been talking, and Brian's here if there's more questions, but they are nearing completion of the engineering, uh, and, um, design, excuse me, the design. The estimate is 6.5 million, and...
The estimate is 6.5 million, and the recent development is that there's a possible funding source for federal freight funds with a local match of 10%. So that local match is estimated to be 1.65 million. We, what staff plans to do is to submit a project to the CARs Technical Review Committee to be considered for CARs funding in that process. The funds will be available, if we are granted the freight funds, would be available 2020, which would support a 2021 construction project. So we wanted you to be aware of the good news, that there's a strong possibility here. KDOT feels pretty good about our chances of getting that, and they, if we collectively can come up with a local match, they're willing to administer the project. So again, we plan to submit this into the CARs Technical Review Committee. We think that it benefits, we're submitting it, but it's really on behalf of the region because obviously it's going to benefit those cities that it touches in Johnson County directly, but all of us indirectly that travel that. Those cities are Oval and Park, Miriam, Shawnee, and Lenexa that are directly tied to that area. However, all, everybody in the region travels that at some point. So although we're submitting it for consideration, we're hopeful that others will support it given that it benefits all. So if there's questions, I'll pause and see if there's questions, and Brian's here as well.
Mr. Allen.
Just one clarification, that's just correcting northbound on I-35?
It's northbound and southbound.
Oh, okay.
And I'll read you the description, and again, if you'd like, Brian, to add to it. The design is to include the widening of northbound and southbound lanes of I-35 from three lanes to four lanes, increasing the northbound vertical clearance under 75th Street and modifying the northbound on-ramp and southbound, on, southbound on and off ramps.
And again, the, the funds for this would be coming from a spatial Department of Transportation account, is that right?
Federal freight funds.
Specific program? Federal program, right.
Brian may have more information on that, I'm not sure.
Good morning, Brian, P.D., Public Works. It'd be from, Penny said it correctly, federal freight funds.
Okay. Mr. Brown.
Just a clarification, I think I heard the County Manager say it was a 10% match, but that...
Local match.
Local match. So how did we get to, how, that should have been, if it's a six and a half million-dollar project, should have been...
16 points.
16 and a half.
16.5.
Thank you. Yeah, I just didn't hear it, thank you.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is exciting news, great news. I guess I'm a little surprised that it's so low. I'm not a contractor or construction engineer, but listening to, to Mr. Allen and his planned expectations, I hope it's, I hope it's a remedy that we're anticipating, Mr. Allen. It'd be nice to have you satisfied for once.
I think sometimes incremental improvements are good, so...
I'm not saying it's, but it just doesn't...
But they're not separating the on-off, where you go on to 69, and then you're coming off of 75th to get on to I-35, and they did a flyover ahead of time to get off at 75th Street, even before you get to 87th Street. But adding those lanes incrementally is a big improvement, but it won't solve 100% of the problem.
Okay. Well, and next are the Jersey barriers on K-7, or K-10, right? K-10.
Well, I do recall earlier, when they were talking about estimates, it was at about 15 million, so this is, this is at least 10% higher.
And to clarify, the construction estimate is 15 million, and then you look at construction engineering at the difference.
Mr. Klucka.
Mr. Chairman, this is great news, and I would encourage staff to move, why the win, why the opportunity is there, that we move as quick as we can to see how we can leverage these funds. But on the negative side, my concern is, this is a state function, and we're having to be, and, and because of our interest, our overall interest is to our community and to the citizens, we're stepping in on this, or we're stepping up on this deal, which I appreciate. I just get a little concerned that a precedent is not being set as we have other projects down the line, and that there'll be some expectations on what role we need to play. But with that in mind, I think as Commissioner Allen has kind of said along the way, and as a frequent user of this corridor, this thing needs, it's got to get repaired as quick as possible, and, and I think that's the priority to our community. Thank you.
Well, thanks for the information. I don't know that there's immediate action that needs to be required by the commission at this point, but you've indicated that you will pursue with the technical committee, and any, then any recommendation from that group will come back to this body.
That's correct.
Do we, do we need to at least for the purpose of the state to get them moving on, on the possibility of getting such a grant filed? Do we need to at least take an initial vote of support or authorization for the staff to move forward on this, understanding that you will bring the options as far as the local funds back?
Brian, do you know more on timing?
I don't want to slow the process down. Pardon me?
We have time to go through the process of talking with the CARs Technical Review Committee.
Okay.
And then if, if we get some general support from there, we can let KDOT know we're going forward, we anticipate this, and we'll stay in contact with them. We're not worried about timing right now.
Thank you. Okay. All right, next item.
Another good news item on Kansas Federal Funds Exchange Program. The governor announced earlier this week that the exchange rate is going back to where it was. You may recall, we've talked about this in the past, where it's a voluntary program where we trade federal obligation authority with KDOT for state funds, and so there is an exchange rate to that. It had in the past been 90 cents per every dollar. On October 1, 2017, they informed us it would be 75 cents for every dollar. The good news is, it's going back up, that was announced this way, to 90 cents per every dollar. What that means for us in Johnson County, based on our projected CIP planning for, for road repair is 250,000 to 400,000 per year. So that's another good news items. And just a few fun facts that Public Works gave me is that overall Kansas counties own and maintain 109,000 miles of roads, or 82% of the road miles in Kansas. In addition, we own and maintain, counties own and maintain 19,500 bridges over 70, or over 77% of the bridges in Kansas, so a fun fact. And again, Brian's here if there's additional questions.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
All right. Next item is audit report. Mr. Kleffner.
Chairman Iler, Commissioners, good morning. Ken Kleffner from Audit Services. This morning I have two reports I'd like to discuss with you. The first is the status of audit recommendations as of March 31st, first quarter. If you look at the quarter as a total, we ended 2017 with 44 open audit recommendations. The District Coroner's Office audit that we published in March of this year added six to the inventory. Management implemented eight recommendations, leaving a balance of 42 at the end of the first quarter. This particular slide arrays the audit recommendations that are open by the audit they originated from, and I'll pause for just a moment before I specifically address just a couple of these. Moving on, the management of IT hardware resources, that's the oldest recommendation, dates back to 2012, and it has received considerable attention this spring. If you recall, that's the audit recommendation that recommended that we centralize the IT equipment hardware purchases, that we purchase IT equipment from purchasing's recommended source, and that IT equipment be approved by the IT governance structure. We discussed this recommendation in our March Audit Committee meeting, and I'm happy and pleased to report that the CIO has developed an accelerated plan to implement in the next 18 months, and the interim county manager has resourced this requirement so it can become reality. I'd like to thank the Audit Committee, the Board, and county leadership for your support in making this move forward. Moving on to the Election Office Transition Audit. The Election Office has five recommendations open, and the scale identifies how the Election Commissioner views the, excuse me, significance to their operations. I've had discussions with the Election Commissioner, and he has informed me that for the most part, those remaining open recommendations are complete. He just hasn't had or taken the opportunity yet to document them in terms of procedures. Moving on to the Airport Commission Transition Audit. No change since last quarter. 14 recommendations remain open, and you can see how management has viewed their criticality to operations. Lastly, the Sheriff's Office. There's 14 recommendations open from the transition audit that we conducted last year, and you can see how Sheriff Hayden views the criticality of those to his operations. And overall, from an entity-wide perspective, this is the summary of the 42 recommendations and how management views their criticality. And with that, I'll conclude my first presentation and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kleffner, thank you for your summary. Can you elaborate any on the, I think you had 14, or you listed 14 crucial recommendations? What the status is, if they, if they are needing immediate action, and what is, what is the holdup? Because they, if they are crucial, as you identified, then should we not be moving ahead on those, or is there something, something that I'm missing? Obviously, there's something I'm missing.
Can I approach this slightly different, and it may or may not answer your question? What the slide I have on, hopefully on your screen, is the open audit recommendations by the audit. If, if you look at the, the last one, the management of IT hardware resources, that's the one I just mentioned, the centralized procurement of IT, and that's the one that we, we discussed in the Audit Committee meeting. The Election Office Transition Audit, there's five remaining, and again, I know Ronnie, I know the Election Commissioner's working on those. We've had constant contact with him. The HUD OIG, city of Olathe, if, if memory serves me, those two recommendations, there's Maury, was for, if I can phrase it this way, is for Johnson County to take over the city of Olathe's home program. And I believe, hopefully I'm not speaking out of term, but action's underway to make that a reality.
Conversations are continuing with the city on that possibility.
I think there are different approaches that need to be ironed out.
But I guess the important takeaway is being worked. I met with Sheriff Hayden just yesterday on the transition audit from the, from the audit we did last year, and I know he's working on those issues as well. He's not letting any grass grow under his feet.
Mr. Kleffner, excuse me.
Yes.
So I appreciate the summary, but on your report on Roman numeral V11, which I guess is page seven, you list 14 crucial recommendations. Those 14, I'm assuming are embedded in the graphic on page three. But the 14 are crucial, so what is the status on those 14? Is there something that we should be doing as a board, or that staff should be doing that action's not being taken? Because crucial, to me, means crucial.
Correct. And hopefully this will give you some comfort, and that is, if I thought it was crucial enough or significant enough to bring it to your attention, I would do that. I'm working with the individual director in assisting in making those come to reality.
So it's crucial enough to put it in the report, but not crucial enough to take? We can discuss offline, I'm, I'm just a little confused.
Okay, one last comment, and then I'll close. This is management's assessment? It's not, it's not an audit assessment?
Or maybe I should be talking to the other end of the DS then. All right.
Okay.
All right.
Maybe offline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue, please, you have...
The Sheriff's Office? Well, we completed the, the last effort in the Sheriff's Office, and we looked at his revenue activity. This audit was really an extension of the transition audit. He has a considerable amount of activities related to collections and deposits, cash handling, accounts receivable, and other related functions. During the transition audit, I spoke to Sheriff Hayden, and we both concluded it would probably be best thing for that to be a separate audit, and that's what we did. This was the objective, or objectives, to assess the internal controls in the Sheriff's Accounts Receivable Program, petty cash, remittance processing to include cash handling, and the inmate welfare fund. The scope included the three years, January 1, 2015, through December 31 of 2017, and these are just some of the methodologies, some of the methods or audit tasks that we perform in accomplishing the audit. Moving to the first topic, and that's accounts receivable. The Sheriff's Office uses a combination of Excel spreadsheets, Word documents, and access database, and handwritten records in support of their revenue program. It was, as I would call it, a homegrown system that had developed over the years. Taken as a whole, the system lacked an audit trail of invoices issued, an audit trail of adjusting entries, it lacked, the processing lacked segregation of duties, and was not integrated with Oracle. We examined a sample of invoices and found inaccuracies in the billings, some of which actually affected the amount being billed, and some of those errors did not affect the billing amount. We concluded that the AR system lacks sufficient internal controls to ensure financial reliability. We recommended the sheriff adopt and transition to the county's Oracle AR module and develop standard operating procedures to support their program. The next topic, the GIMS receipt register system. As you know, GIMS provides IT support to the sheriff. GIMS developed a register system in 2011, which simply automated a manual process. One of the features of that system was to provide a receipt to the remitter. A key control, an audit trail if you will, was not designed into the system and allowed receipts to be adjusted after they had been issued and renumbered. In essence, money could be given to the Sheriff's Office, a receipt provided to the remitter, and then the transaction be deleted. The system was not designed to address internal controls in a remittance environment. So our recommendation to the sheriff was to consult with GIMS and have the controls necessary to provide the audit trails needed.
And the Sheriff's Office response on those two was?
Positive.
Okay, thank you.
I'll address that in just a minute.
Needed to make that statement, thank you.
Okay. Petty cash. The sheriff at the time maintained 44 petty cash funds in six locations, and in reality, petty cash is really old technology in light of the tools that we have today, given that we have the purchase card and I expense. We found the Sheriff's Office was performing an extensive amount of work for funds which had little or no use. We recognize from an audit perspective that, that the sheriff has a need to maintain a cash fund, and recommend he close all but one account and develop appropriate procedures to support its use. Remittance processing is the next topic. The Sheriff's Office has multiple remittance processing activities, offering a variety of services to the public, fingerprinting, for example, conceal and carry licensing, civil processing, offender registration, and bonds. Each activity developed their own procedures for collection, deposit, recording, and safeguarding. And just if you have an opportunity to read the report on page 10, we have a little display of, of the variances of the processes being used. But what we found from an audit perspective was that some of the procedures were inefficient, and safeguarding methods were inadequate. We're recommending the sheriff re-engineer the entire process within the Sheriff's Office and have those people who are handling cash to attend training provided by TFM. Now, if I can just digress for just a moment, we're not asking him to tweak it, we're not asking him to make little adjustments, we're asking him to re-engineer the entire process. Inmate Welfare Fund, the next topic. The inmate welfare fund is a resource for inmates while they are incarcerated to purchase commissary items, for things like snacks, hygiene items such as toothpaste. And the inmate welfare fund is managed by a third-party vendor, and that third-party vendor surprise, provides the software to support that system. There are two accounts established for the inmate welfare fund. One is a separate bank account outside Oracle County Financials, and that is the, the account that holds the money in trust on behalf of the inmates. There's another account within the county umbrella, Oracle, that interacts with the trust account, and I'll try to explain that in just a minute. Regarding the separate bank account, because these funds are held in trust, the account balance is reported to TFM at the end of the year to be included on the county's financials. The amount reported by the Sheriff's Office to TFM for the year ending 2016 was overstated. The amount reported by the sheriff's office to TFM for the year ending 2016 was overstated. The other account, the county account, when an inmate buys something from the commissary, funds are withdrawn from their account, put in suspense, and then eventually, or come over here to the Oracle account to pay for those services. What we found was that those two accounts weren't being reconciled, and as a result of the audit, thirty-nine thousand was transferred from the inmate account, the separate trust account, over to the county account. The audit also noted the sheriff was not receiving the appropriate commission rate for my care packs. The sheriff was receiving thirty-four percent commission, and according to the contract, that rate should have been thirty-four and a half percent. The audit also noted that the sheriff's office did not have a good process to recognize credit adjustments. If an inmate bought something that was in error, it'd be returned, it's those kind of credit adjustments. If the inmate bought something and then was released, there was a credit being given. That credit wasn't coming over to the sheriff's office. So the sheriff's office has recently employed a new vendor to manage their inmate welfare fund. Our concern is that if the sheriff does not develop procedures, institute standard reconciliation techniques, and designate specific personnel to accomplish these activities, they could be experiencing the same issue in the future. So the recommendation was to develop standard operating procedures and designate specific personnel the responsibility for balancing, reconciling, and reporting. That concludes the audit recommendations, but we did offer two audit observations. The first has to do with the inmate telephone commissions. There's been a lot of media attention, and even court, in the form of lawsuits, given to this over the last many years, actually. And the specific issue is that law enforcement agencies who detain people and provide telephone services are, in many cases, receiving exorbitant commissions off of those telephone fees, when in actuality, it's the inmate's family who's paying for those. So the intent of the audit observation was, particularly in light of the new contract coming up, was just to bring it to his attention, because there's a potential reputational and financial risk in light of the new telephone contract. Grant management, that's the second audit observation. The sheriff's office has received a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, which has not been reported in the county's Oracle grant module, and as a consequence, the expenditures from that grant have not been reported on the county's financial statements, and steps are underway to record this grant appropriately for 2017. We offered seven recommendations, and the sheriff has graciously agreed to all seven. And I think more important than that is while the audit was being conducted, steps were undertaken to actually start initiating some of these recommendations. So before I close, I'd like to recognize Stephanie and John, they were the audit team on this, great job, folks. Now, I'd also like to recognize Sheriff Hayden and his staff. For the past year and a half, in some fashion, Audit Services has been working in the sheriff's office, the transition audit, the staffing analysis, in some respects, the coroner's office audit, and now this one. I really appreciate his welcoming attitude and support of the program, and so that concludes my presentation, and I welcome any comments you might have, or questions.
Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kleffner, you point out the importance of internal controls, and you did not say it, but I think by implication, it is a management responsibility, and I commend the sheriff for not just the steps in this report, but the other steps that he has taken, and the phone affordability issue, I think, is a valid one, but I still would suggest maybe there are maybe some slight tweaks we could do that might be beneficial, particularly as relates to mental health and funding. But having said that, Sheriff, before you were sheriff, there was a conversation regarding the use of Oracle and its ability to support the operational needs that you had, and I was wondering if we have been able to address that sufficiently, or if there's still something else that needs to be done. I understand that you've concurred with these recommendations, but that was an issue at one time, has that been resolved?
Sheriff Hayden.
Calvin Hayden, Sheriff. Mr. Commissioner, we are adopting as fast as we can a transition into using Oracle. Traditionally, you know, over a period of time, it's just like Mr. Kleffner said, we had developed a, a system of, where the ladies had control of what they were doing, and it worked for them, and it worked well. But, you know, we've got to advance, and this is an opportunity for us to take advantage of that and start bringing ourselves into the 21st century.
Very good, thank you. Sheriff. While you're there at the podium, are there any other comments you'd like to make in regards to the audit?
Well, I'll tell you, we've been, the auditor's office has, I just can't, I just almost can't explain to you how beneficial it's been to our organization. It's been a positive experience. We've actually developed friendships within the audit department, because when they speak, we look at it as an opportunity to make our operation better, and it's not a gotcha-type thing, it's we're here to help, this is what we think you should do, you don't have to do it, but they come from below to assist you, and it's been, I can't say a positive experience, it's been an enlightening experience. And the professionalism, the quality of work that they give us, second to none. But again, part of that is the way we receive it, too. You know, we had to work on our culture a little bit, and, you know, we consider it an opportunity to get better, and we're all about that, and they've helped us get that way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Kleffner, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other items? There are none, so we'll go to commission comments. Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. Mr. Sheriff, I had a great lunch last Friday afternoon, Chair and I were able to attend the Twenty-Second Annual Regional Assembly, titled Regional Leadership Award, sponsored by Men America Regional Council. The highlight of the presentations was keynote speaker Clarence Anthony, he's the CEO of the, and executive director of the National League of Cities, some of us used to belong to that organization, we were involved with cities. Anyway, the winners were, for distinguished policy leader award, Representative Jeanne Lauer, Missouri House of Representatives. She, single-handedly, allowed 9/11 contracts between the state and the 9/11 phone that allowed the citizens to pay for 9/11, which they were the only state in the United States that didn't have that opportunity, so we have to thank her for that, that's why she received that special award. The other awards were given to KC Scholars, Sheila Tracy is president of the Northland Regional Chamber, Truman Heartland Community's Foundation, and Joel Scott, retiring executive director of the Civic Council of Greater Kansas City. All gave great presentations, a great lunch, enjoyed by all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clicker.
Nothing at this point.
Mr. Ashcraft.
I believe it's Flag Day, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you're going to offer any observations, but recognize the importance of the flag to our nation, and also, I believe it is Donald Trump's birthday, so happy birthday, Mr. President.
Mr. Allen.
Just a quick comment, I attended that luncheon last Friday, and Speaker was actually-
Sorry, Jim.
Very good event.
Mr. Osterhaus.
I've got a few things, I was wondering if the sheriff might be able to tell us how much he raised for Feed the Need at his luncheon last, I don't know if he knows the number or not, but a lot of us went and had a, had a broad or a burger, helped Feed the Need.
Scene was outstanding. Good, good, good to hear, I'm sorry I couldn't join you guys, we had another thing going on. I think our guys made about $600 that day.
Okay.
So it's pretty impressive, thank you all for eating.
That's great.
We're working on it.
Thank you, Cal.
That's never been a problem for us. Well, thank you all.
So then Thursday night was Pork and Politics, hosted by the Shawnee Chamber, I know several of us were there, and it was a good time and a great opportunity to meet not only the Chamber members, but some of our fellow representatives of various levels. Wednesday, I'm kind of proud of this, our Leadership Oval in Park class had our fundraiser, every year the Leadership Oval in Park class has a fundraiser for various charities, and we chose Hope Kids, and they do services for kids who have heart defects, or cancer, or things like that, and we were able to raise $26,000 at the last count, might be a little bit higher than that, but that's about $6,000 more than any other leadership class has ever raised, so we were really proud to be the number-one class as far as raising money for charity. And finally, Wednesday, we had the USC, United Community Services, and not USC, Human Services Summit, which our own Maury Thompson was one of the sponsors for that event, so we appreciate Maury's involvement in that great organization. Unfortunately, I had to leave a little bit early, but was there for about half of it, so it was nice to see everyone, it was a packed house at the Arts and Heritage Center. So thank you for all those involved.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. I have just one comment. Yesterday, at lunchtime, the chairman and I and members of the county manager's office met with the Kansas City Area Transit Authority relative to concerns that I had, and I believe the chairman shared those in his questions, very similar train of thought. We got some answers and some commitments about going forward and transparency in the direction that KC ATA is headed. I will say for the record that I was disappointed that the CEO of the Kansas City Area Transit Authority didn't have time to come to that meeting. I would submit that we are probably pretty important in their big picture, and if they haven't got that message yet, I'm hoping that they're getting it now. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. One related item, we had a Transit Comprehensive Service Analysis Study Session scheduled for next week, June 21, due to commission absences, that has been rescheduled to July 19th. So that study session will be rescheduled to July 19. There are no other items on our agenda to be addressed, so we are adjourned, we'll take a short break, and come back for agenda review.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.